This conference will now be recorded.
Now let me write few points here now as assignment. So here, what we need to understand is, tables related to APP or F double one zero. How many tables will be updated when you perform automatic payment program or F double one zero?
Forty.
One is R E G U P.
Amigo.
R E G U H.
R E G U H.
Not amigo, yeah. And then.
R E G U P.
Who's your?
R E G U P.
P A Y R. These are the four tables which we need to understand.
Ah by B S I K, B S I, B S A K.
They are accounting document table, here we are talking about APP table.
Okay.
B S I K, all these things are common with respect to vendor, with respect to GL and all. But here, we are specifically talking about APP table or F double one zero table. These tables you will be questioned in your interview. Or when you are working in any project, you will have to frequently look into this table. Understand what is happening here. So no other go, if you know APP F double one zero, you must know these four table. What I want everybody to do is, run one automatic payment program, only one APP program. So, run one APP program. First point. After parameters. Tables, second one, after proposal, table, third one. After payment. Table, fourth one. After print, table. It is not okay if you run everything and then go to the table. You have to be strictly following a logic in which. First you complete automatic payment program. First you complete, when I say automatic payment program, run one complete APP cycle. From parameter until payment, do not look into any table. Do not look into any table, straight away execute one cycle, that everybody is clear right? Maybe ten fifteen minutes you can complete one cycle.
Yes sir.
Right, after that, you refer these four tables. After completing APP cycle without any error, if you are getting any error, don't come to the table. Go to the table only when you executed APP without any error. Once APP is processed without any error, take a single invoice only. Single invoice only, execute it, make sure there are no error. You are clear, confident about the process whatever you did. Then open these four tables, go to R E G U H, see what data is available here. Next one, R E G U H, see what data is available here. R E G U S, what data is available here. P A Y R, what data is available here. After that, you have to look at, on what basis I am executing R E G U P table. Everybody is aware, when you go to table, table contains total information, am I correct?
Sir.
Whenever we go to any table, each table contains total information. But here, you are talking about table to look at information related to your payment only. Your payment how are we going to identify? When you perform automatic payment program, there are two key points right, what are those two key points? For you to run automatic payment program, there are four points which are important.
Payment method. Posting date.
No.
Posting date, next run date.
You are going inside the automatic payment program, I am talking about before going to automatic payment program, to run automatic payment program. What are those two points only?
Do you voice?
Invoice and payment.
My question itself contains the answer, there are two points. To run automatic payment program.
Proposal and profit.
To run automatic payment program, what is the T code?
Double one zero.
F double one zero, on F double one zero, how many inputs you need to give, one or two or more than two?
Run date.
Or the. Name ID, payment ID.
Run date.
Identification.
That is called as run date and identification. One is run date, two is identification, these key points you cannot forget. Alright, you must be identifying your automatic payment program with the combination of run date and identification. Whatever the table you go, these two will become key fields. Because when you go to any table, table contains all the details. How will you get data related to yours? Table will not identify your user ID, table will not recognize you right? You have to recognize the data, am I correct?
Yes sir.
Right, when you are in the table, if you need to identify, if you need to recognize the data, you should have some key fields. You should have some key information with which I can pull my data. For that, your automatic payment program is always executed with the help of run date and then identification. Any table that you are referring to, whether it is R E G U P, R E G U H, R E G U S or P A Y R, these are the key fields. Pass run date, pass identification, meaning when you are executing automatic payment program, just like that, don't give it. When I say just like that, do not give it, for example, I am giving like this. And here, you need to strictly follow the naming convention for identification. It is not okay if I put one, if I put two, if I put three, after nine, what I need to put? Ten? Now, is this logical or illogical?
Logical.
Not logical, how many digits are there? First one.
One digit.
Second one.
Two digits.
Let's say after ninety-nine. This is.
Three digits.
Three digits, though they are in the sequence, but the logic is not correct because the length is inconsistent there. The length is inconsistent, if it is nine, you need to make sure, if you are going to maintain four digits, tell your user to put. Like triple zero nine, not only nine. Any logic, whatever they are following, it is okay, but there should be a logic. It is not that you take your own identification, I take my own identification, it's not going to work out in any project. As a consultant, it becomes your responsibility to tell the user. Otherwise, anybody can create anything right? Am I correct?
Yes sir.
If you tell, this is how you need to create, every user will follow the same guideline, same instruction. If those guidelines, if those instructions are not coming from the consultant, user does it in their own way. Right, here, if you are taking four digit, if you want to take one, two, three, four, it is okay. But make sure length is consistent everywhere. Three digit, all the identification must be three digit. Four digit, all the identification must be four digit likewise. For example, I am taking. One, let's say triple zero one. Now, in real time, if you are working in any project, do you have only one company code or there may be multiple company codes?
Multiple company codes.
There will be multiple company code. Let's say you have ten company codes, possible or not? Assuming in a project, there are ten company codes. In these ten company code, let's say all the ten company codes are using automatic payment program for their payment. Now, for every company code, payment run is separate or all company codes, it's a common payment run?
Separate.
Usually, or majoritely, for every company code, payment run is separate, am I correct?
Yes sir.
For example. A is from company code thousand. B is from company code two thousand. C is from company code three thousand. D is from company code four thousand likewise. You have multiple users who is related to each of their company codes. If A is executing, now let's say for all the ten company codes, you have the payment. For all the ten company code, you have the payment today. In every company code, run date will be this and then identification will be this, am I correct?
Sir.
B also will do the same thing, am I correct? Yes, no? According to A, this is a unique number. According to B, this is a unique number. According to C, this is a unique number. According to D, this is a unique number because D does not know about the other company codes. Similarly, B does not know about other company code, but will system accept this or not? Is the system going to accept these four run date identification for these four company codes or not?
Will accept.
Accept it then.
It will accept. Why this is going to accept? If you go to F double one zero, do you have any place where you are segregating a company code? On F double one zero main screen.
Yes.
No sir.
On F double one zero main screen. I am purposefully not opening SAP, I want you to relate what I am talking. If I open the SAP, you will connect what I am talking. I want you to connect when there is no SAP in front of you.
No company code.
Right? When you run F double one zero, when you are inside F double one zero, this is what you need to give before you go inside, am I correct?
Yes sir.
This is what you need to give before you go inside, company code you will be giving only after you enter. Unique run date, unique identification, meaning combination must be unique. For example, if I executed this run date, this identification, I can reuse the same date, but I cannot reuse same one, am I correct?
Yes sir.
I can reuse the date, no problem in it, but I cannot use triple zero one. If I put a triple zero one, instead of creating a new payment, it will display the existing payment, is that true? Verify this.
Yes sir.
Yes.
Right? It will not create the new payment, it will display the existing payment if you give existing run date, existing identification. If your intention is to create a new payment program, new payment run, you must give. Unique run date and identification combination, together they have to be unique, not independently, together they have to be unique. So what I can do, if I do it, this will be duplicate, am I correct? This is not allowed.
Sir.
Other way what I can do, I can do this and I can do this, this is allowed?
Yes sir.
Yes sir.
Yes.
This is allowed, okay? Or if I change this same, if I change this to. Twenty-two, this is allowed?
Yes sir.
Yes, no?
No sir.
Yes, this is also in case allow.
This is also allowed, this is also allowed because these two are different, these two are different. You have to do a concatenation. Meaning this and this together is not same as this, am I correct?
Yes sir.
Maybe one parameter is matching, but two when I take it together, they are different. Two when I take, they are different. Now, every payment run, system is identifying with the help of run date identification combination. Now, when you go to table, in any table, whether you take R E G U P, H S or P A Y R. In every table, you need to pull the data based on these two key fields only. Tomorrow, somebody might ask a simple question, how do you see the data? Or you might easily tell APP related tables are R E G U H, R E G U P, R E G U S, P A Y R. I will put a simple question, how do you pull the data from this table? What is the input criteria you will pass to get data from this table? Now you have to be confident enough to tell run date and then identification, yes or no?
Sir.
How system will segregate your payment data in this table? You must know based on the run date and then identification, if you do not know these two things, whatever you talk may not be helpful. May not be meaningful, may not create the impact. So what I want you to do is, run one automatic payment program successfully without getting any error. You got the error, fix all the errors, again create one more payment run, you should come to this stage. Only when you executed APP without any error, one go, everything is great. Clear right?
But if you, if you run each stage, parameters and check the tables, are we going to see anything or until the program runs completely?
No, first thing, you will have to run one payment program without any error, so that you have clear understanding how payment run is happening, what you did.
Okay.
Okay, first you do it and after that, don't look at the table. And after that, you create one more table, I mean create one more payment program. When you create one more payment program, enter only the parameters. Enter only the parameter, after parameter, are we saving or not?
Yes.
After parameters, we are saving. Now here I put a table question mark. You have the four tables related to APP?
Yeah.
Yes.
Right, after entering the parameter, pass your run date identification. This table, check you find any data or not, if yes, update. After parameter, R E G U P table is updated. Go to R E G U H table, pass run date identification, check if anything is there. Update after parameter, R E G U H is also updated. Verify R E G U S. Check if it is updated or not, also go to P A Y R. Out of four, you will get to know how many tables are involved in parameters, am I right?
Yes sir.
Yes sir.
No doubt. Similarly, you run the proposal, only proposal, don't do anything, don't go to payment, go to only proposal. Whatever the table is updated in parameter, it will remain as it is even when you are in the proposal, am I correct? Table will not be removed, table will remain the same. For example, here you got, let's say this table updated, you don't need to check that table again because it is already updated. Check remaining table, what additional tables are getting updated at the time of a proposal. If there is any additional table, add it. Similarly, go to payment. After payment, you check what tables are getting updated. Similarly, after printout, you will find an option called printout. After payment, you will get one more option called printout, click on the print and then see if any table is updated or printout does not have any table update. Then you will have a clarity, okay, when we do automatic payment program. What tables are getting updated, what tables are not getting updated, you have a clear understanding. Tomorrow, even if somebody is asking, or when you are in a project, you are getting stuck somewhere. By looking at the situation, by looking at the scenario, things should strike your mind, okay, I think this is the situation. Let me check this table, let me see this, let me see that. It is not connected anywhere with what you are practicing, it is straight away connected with what you are understanding, am I clear?
Sir, print option not used in F double one zero, no? We are not using that print option.
Click and then check the table only, that is the only assignment. Okay, just click on the print, after payment, you would have seen print option enabled on the top.
Yes sir.
Right, you just click on the print option, go to the table, see what is happening, if you find anything getting updated or nothing. Then you have an idea, okay, I think if when I do a print, there is no action, I mean nothing is happening in the print. Is this assignment clear for everyone?
Yes sir.
Yes.
Sir, but each company code run date and identification code are different, right? They have to be.
It has to be different, yes. That's what I said, this is to be in a logical way. As I said, the moment it is saying, it is duplicated, we highlighted with red.
Yes.
So, company code number one, if somebody is trying to do it, his APP will pass, he will be able to process the payment. When company code number two is doing, it will not allow them to enter the payment, right? It will display this payment, am I correct?
Yes.
If user from company code two thousand does not have authorization to company code thousand, this will give a error, you do not have authorization for company code thousand, am I correct?
Yes.
If user from company code three thousand is trying to enter the same parameter, it will not allow them to go inside, instead they get a message. You do not have authorization to company code thousand, is my statement correct?
Yes.
That is what is going to happen, as a result, we need to make a note that whenever you create automatic payment program, run date, identification must be unique. It is not company code specific, it is client specific. Your company code and all will be specified only after you pass unique run date, unique identification combination. Date can be same, identification can be same, but date and identification cannot be same. Alright?
If you, if you.
This is what?
One, company code one. Uh, if, if some other user in company code two, if he maintains same parameters in that run date and identification code. The, uh, that user can see payment details of company code one, sir, in that.
If he has the authorization, he can see, if he does not have the authorization, he cannot see.
Okay, say matter will be there, right? In that screen, these, these.
No.
Documents are generated like, they can't see, right?
They can't see, because when you press enter, it will go and pass the data in the table and then pull the information.
Yes.
For that company code, if that user is having authorization, it will display. For that company code, if the user does not have the authorization, it will not display, it will throw an error. You do not have authorization to company code two thousand whatsoever, the company code.
Okay.
Otherwise, there is no control, right? Anybody can see anyone's payment, right?
Yes, yes. Thank you.
That will not happen. Okay, once this is done, make sure we will be executing different APP scenarios only when you are all comfortable with. Executing automatic payment program, checking the automatic payment program from the table side. And understanding what is there in R E G U P table, what is there in R E G U H table, R E G U S, P A Y R. All these four table you need to understand, what data is getting stored here and how do we use this table? Tomorrow, you are working further on the automatic payment program, there is something called printout. There is something called payment advice, there is something called a payment medium. When I say payment advice, is payment advice required for every vendor payment or not?
Yes sir.
Yes. Yeah.
Right, whenever you are making payments to any vendor, it is mandatory for all of us to submit. Payment information along with the payment advice. Payment advice will represent payment detailed breakup, meaning we processed payment of twenty-five thousand rupees. Which contains the following invoices which we have cleared from our side. Only then, your supplier will be able to clear the invoices from their side. Otherwise, even though you paid, he will still ask this invoice you did not pay. You need to ensure proper invoice details we are providing to the supplier along with the payment, in short, it is a payment. What is that called, payment?
Advice.
Payment advice, payment advice, and this is also called as payment supporting document. Either payment advice or payment supporting document, this is a customized document. This is not a standard document, this is a customized document, meaning you have to sit with the ABAP consultant. And get this payment advice developed, payment advice, if it is a customized one. Customization means R I C F object, from the R I C F object, payment advice falls under which category?
Reports.
Re. Form. Form. Smart form.
Forms.
Yeah.
It is a smart form or it is a form. Your payment advice is part of a form or it is part of a smart form. To create this smart form, we need to collect some basic information from the client. What fixed content that they would like to quote, where they want to put their vendor name, vendor address, where they want to put. Their company name, company address, what fixed content that they want to put. Dear supplier or dear vendor, please find the attached payment information so and so. We have issued check number so and so, or we processed the transfer with so and so reference. Some fixed content they will give, some fixed format will be there. Invoice number, invoice date, payment amount, if any discount is taken. Similar format we need to take, this is all standard content only. And this, you need to get it developed by ABAP. For anything which we are getting developed through ABAP, what do we need to prepare?
Function specification document.
Yes. F S or functional specification we need to prepare. For us to write functional specification, we need to ensure we know. We know which table is supposed to be referred to pull the data. You have four tables on the top related to APP, you must know to prepare the payment advice form. Which table we will be referring, how do we represent detailed breakup of the payment? That you need to make a note. Second one, when you are talking about payment medium. When you are talking about payment medium and when you are talking about printout. So payment medium is basically representing online transfer. Printout is basically representing a check printout, am I clear?
Sure.
When we say payment medium, we are talking about online transfer. When you are talking about online transfer, in general, the accountant will log into net banking. Accountant will add all the vendor accounts as beneficiary, the way we use it in our savings account. Or they will directly send the details to bank, bank will transfer the payment on company's behalf. How this is going to happen?
Host to host.
We will send the details to the bank.
This will be the bank.
Bank will. Payment medium.
Right. We will be sending details to the bank, bank will process the payment on our behalf from our account, am I correct?
Yes.
Yes.
If you are using personal banking, I am using my personal banking, you are using your personal banking, if I need to send money to you. Or you need to send money to me, what I will do, I will ask your account details, I will add as a beneficiary in my account, yes or no?
Yes.
You will also do the same thing, right? You will ask my account details, I will share my account details, you will add in your beneficiary and then you will do the funded transfer. Is it the same case in any organization to do the funded transfer to vendor or supplier? No, right?
Sir.
Nobody will do it, so what they will do, they will send the details of the supplier bank account, payment to the bank. This is basically a form, this is basically a format. This format is usually either XML format or flat file format. Flat file we have already seen, XML also we have already seen, format.
Yes sir.
Where did we use flat files so far, L S M W?
Yes sir.
Right, where did we use XML file, migrate your data, migration cockpit?
Yes sir.
Right, in this similar format, majoritely it will be text file only, flat file. Or if it might be CSV format or it might also be XML format. Based on the bank instruction, we will be taking the data, but data remains the same, format only might be different. Data remains the same, in general, for us to process any bank payment through bank to bank transfer, you need account number, yes or no?
Yes sir.
We need account number, we need account branch code or I F S C code, you need amount. You need account holder name, some key information is required, right? Mandatory details for initiating any online transfer. This information you need to know, we need to understand, okay? For my vendor, where am I maintaining their bank account details? Slowly, we will be connecting the dots, we will, we will be doing it practically, understanding it conceptually, but before that, we need to have at least an basic idea. We need to understand where am I maintaining my vendor bank account details? Second one, when I am processing the payment, how do I know my vendor bank account details? Which table is recording it? Whether it is getting recorded in the table or not, that I need to understand. Second one, if I am trying to process any check. We need to print a check, right? Nobody will write check with pen, yes or no? Nobody will write check with pen, yes or no, because if I have hundred vendor, I will have to issue hundred checks, yes or no?
Yes, sir.
Do you really think that accountant will sit with pen, paper, checkbook and then pen, he will keep on writing like a school kid doing the assignment?
No, sir.
There may be a spelling mistake, there may be a number mistake, right? So, all these things will be automatically printed from S A P. Now, how do we get check printout automatically from S A P? For this, again you need a printout. Anything that you are printing is called as a form.
Yes, sir.
Sir.
Anything that you print in S A P is basically a form, form is also called as a smart form, this is again part of R I C F object.
Sir.
This is again part of R I C F object, for you to generate a check, again we need to write a functional specification.
Yes, sir.
Again, we need to write, again, we need to prepare functional specification to print a check, from which table I will take the data, again, we need to understand, though you have multiple tables there, in which scenario, which table you will be using, you need to have a clarity. Otherwise, tomorrow somebody might ask, assume in a project, you need to prepare a check, you need to prepare a functional specification for printing a check, which table do you refer? Definitely, I cannot tell all the tables, am I correct?
Sir.
I know four tables, my question is, straight away pointing out, for you to prepare a functional specification, for you to prepare a functional specification related to a check printout, which table do you refer or which table you provide the logic from? Can I tell all the four tables, my answer is correct?
No.
No, sir.
I have to be very particular about it, right, I have to be crystal clear, in this table I get this detail, to print a check from this table, this field I am going to extract. For that, no other go, you need to understand these logics first, before you understand, before you practice, all the A P P different scenarios, that is a never-ending activity. Now, everybody is comfortable on A P P execution, take a different, different scenario, based on the scenario, do the A P P multiple time. Not that same thing repeatedly you are doing, that is not going to add any value, that will not add any benefit. When you are doing A P P next time, you need to ensure you are doing it with a new scenario. Then you are seeing the difference, okay, in this scenario, this is how I need to do. These are the additional points I need to make a note, because in your interviews, they specifically ask questions related to A P P, they want you to talk about issues whatever you got in A P P. For you to talk all this kind of thing, there should be some basic understanding, the way it is used in a project, am I right?
Sir.
When we know this is how this is used in a project, accordingly, you can talk in a realistic manner. Otherwise, we may be explaining, we may be talking, but may not be convincing enough every time. Okay, you need to make sure, keep in your mind, payment medium, how it is coming for online transfer, printout relative to check, how it is coming, payment advice in both instances, how is it coming, we need to make a note. This is how your automatic payment program, we need to understand, which we will be continuing in the further sessions with the scenarios. Now, whenever we are talking about it, so far, what did we talk about? We were talking about payments, right? And we covered two types of payment, what are those two types of payment?
Manual and automatic.
Manual and automatic.
Okay, manual and automatic. Okay, this is one way, if I want you to tell me another set, set for two types of payment, what will be that?
Ticket and transfer.
Check and transfer.
Check and transfer.
Okay, if I want another two types of payments?
Standard and partial payment.
And partial payment.
Advance payment and final payment.
If I want another two types, I am still not getting what I am looking for.
Incoming and outgoing.
Incoming and outgoing.
Incoming and outgoing, this is what I am looking for. Okay, incoming payment, outgoing payment, yeah. Cash and bank, now if you see, a simple term is creating a confusion or not? My expectation is this, and you are telling this, but according to you, you are correct, according to me, I am also correct. And when you look at everything, all are correct? Right, based on this scenario, based on this situation, we need to make sure what we need to explain, how we need to explain, how we need to convince. Right, slowly you need to understand, you need to develop that skill set in you. Otherwise, user may be expecting something, your project manager may be expecting something, or the other person, whoever is discussing with you, their expectation, their understanding may be different. If you are expecting, you are understanding something else, there may be a contradiction. Your points are not aligned with my expectation or my points are not aligned with your expectation, definitely, we both will never be in the same agreement. I will tell no, he doesn't know anything, you will tell whatever I will tell, he says no only. These things are also quite common in the project everywhere, but you need to make sure, depending on the situation, depending on the other person, you have to sometimes change the way you talk, change your explanations, am I clear? Don't tell the same point repeatedly to everybody, because not everybody is aligned with what you are talking. Somebody may have a different thought, somebody may have a different opinion, somebody may have a different understanding. According to the situation, you need to ensure you are able to understand, you are able to manage. Now, here we are talking about incoming payment, outgoing payment. Now, after payment, what we need to do?
B R S.
You have to do?
Reconciliation.
Reconciliation. My question is, after payment, what we will do, it is only reconciliation, I am nowhere mentioning after bank payment, after cash payment, am I correct?
Sir.
Sure, I am just asking, after payment, what we will do, after payment, we will do reconciliation. If it is cash payment, cash reconciliation, if it is bank payment, bank reconciliation, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Now, so far, in our payment, so far in our payment, whatever we did recently, is it cash payment or is it bank payment?
Bank payment.
Bank. Bank payment.
It was bank payment. For all, bank payments, we need to perform bank reconciliation or B R S. Everybody must have heard B R S, right, bank reconciliation?
Sir.
Yes, sir.
Now. Bank with G L account, logic. So, we used a logic to create a bank accounts. Option number one. Option number two, option number one. Main and sub-account, option number two, only main account, no sub-account, which option we followed?
Or. Main and sub. Main and sub-bank account.
We followed option number one, this is what we were using. This is our logic, this option number two, we did not opt or we did not, we did not use, am I correct? We are not using this option. Now, if I am using option number one, is B R S required or not required?
Required, sir.
B R S required.
If I am using option number two?
Not required.
Not required.
Not required.
Why not required in option number two?
It is straight, the main account transactions have been done.
Right, when you are directly using a single G L account called the bank main account, by default, your bank main account will correspond to bank statement, agree? There is no point of any reconciliation, you just need to look at what is appearing, what is not appearing. Do it out of S A P, in S A P, it is not possible. We are using a single G L account, B R S in S A P is not possible, B R S must be done out of S A P in the Excel sheet. But if you are using main account, sub-account concept, B R S is required, because when you are talking about B R S, we are talking about one point. B R S is equal to matching, bank statement, closing balance with what?
Opening balance.
Bank, main G L account, closing balance, not opening balance. Right, from a bank statement, whatever the closing balance you will find, same closing balance, you need to find it, bank, main G L account. And why we are doing it, because whenever you process any payment, our payments are, whether it is related to incoming or it is related to outgoing, not directly hitting main account, right, they are hitting your sub-account. Even when we processed automatic payment program, our automatic payment program posted entry to bank main account or bank outgoing account?
Outgoing accounts.
Outgoing.
It is posted to bank outgoing account, now how you will move it from bank outgoing account to bank main account? Just like that, you cannot move it, right, you need a logic, you need a situation where it is confirmed. You will look at the statement, okay, on twenty first December, I processed a ten thousand rupees to Ajay. Okay, I will look at the bank statement on twenty first date on the bank statement. If my bank statement is also representing transfer to Ajay ten thousand rupees, then only I will clear it. Assuming, yes, I processed the payment, bank also confirmed the payment, agree?
Yes, sir.
Right, now for you to do it, you need to perform B R S or bank reconciliation. Without bank statement, bank reconciliation is not possible. We know number of entries that you have in your S A P, in any company code where S A P is implemented, is less or more?
More.
Number of entries in payments, number of payments to vendor customer is more. Definitely, manually reconciling is not possible, they will do it through system only. For them to do it through system, no other go, you must create bank account with option number one. For every bank account, there must be main G L account, there must be sub-G L account for classifying incoming payment, outgoing payment. Further, your incoming payment can be segregated as check incoming, transfer incoming. Further, your outgoing can be classified as check outgoing, transfer outgoing. Depending on the business requirement, you can segregate several incoming payment, several outgoing payment, but make sure main account, sub-account is the key point which you must remember, and when you are doing the B R S, during B R S, we will move entries from where to where?
Sub-account to main account.
Incoming, outgoing.
From sub-account to to main account. We will not be representing incoming, outgoing everywhere, incoming, outgoing, together we call it as a sub-account, am I clear?
Sir. Sir.
Whenever you are talking about sub-account, by default, it is including both incoming account and then outgoing account. So, you, we do not need to clearly specify incoming, outgoing, simply combine these two, use a common terminology, sub-account. Clear it? And to do what? In S A P, we have two types of B R S. One is.
M B S.
Two is what?
Automatic.
E B A.
E B S. Right, M B S is nothing but what?
An analyst.
Manual bank statement, E B S.
Electronic bank.
Electronic bank statement, this M B S, we usually call it as M B R S, this we call it as E B R S. But somebody might ask M B S, somebody might ask M B R S, somebody might ask E B S, somebody might ask E B R S, both are one and the same. Because we are all habituated to B R S, right, not B S, yes or no? Right from our academic, we have, we have been studying B R S, bank reconciliation statement. If it is manual, manual bank reconciliation statement, if it is digital, electronic, electronic bank reconciliation statement. But make sure either M B S or M B R S are one and the same, either E B S or E B R S are one and the same, clear?
Yes, sir.
Now, in M B S, we will update this statement in S A P. And in E B R S, we will upload this statement in S A P, are these two statements same or there is a difference?
There is a difference.
There is a difference, right, here you are updating, you need to update the statement manually here, because the name itself is telling, manual bank statement, you need to take the statement and update the statement information manually in the statement, in the S A P. Here, it is uploaded, take digital statement, download the statement from the bank, upload it in S A P. Here, it has manual intervention. It has no manual intervention here. Meaning, you can manipulate this statement here, you cannot manipulate statement here, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Sir.
But if my statement is representing a transaction, I can skip here. If my statement is having a different amount and all, I can skip here, but here I cannot do anything, literally, I have zero control here. Download the statement, upload the statement, process E B R S, that's all. But here, download the statement, read the statement, update the statement, and then perform E B, manual B R S. Now, where you have more control on E B S or on M B S?
E B R S.
E B R S is more controlled because there is no manual intervention, nobody can manipulate the statement, nobody can manipulate the bank data. Logic configuration is exactly the same here. For example, let's say, if you know this hundred percent, if you know E B R S, M B R S hundred percent, M B S ninety percent is used in E B S. So technically, E B S has what, what level of difference maximum?
Ten percent.
Ten percent.
Only the ten percent. If you understand M B S properly, you will get to know all the logics and all used in the E B S, used in M B S in S A P, in short, in S A P system, how B R S is working, you will be able to understand clearly, logically, conceptually with manual bank statement. Without understanding, without logical thinking and all, when we come to E B R S, ninety percent of E B S you are already aware, there is nothing that you are learning newly here. Logic, everything is same, you are just understanding what is the format, how system is reading the format, that is hardly ten percent, not even ten percent. Right, when you are understanding things in a logical manner, in a sequential order, you will find things are getting better as you move forward. Less effort, you will have to see, yes, I am now able to understand, I am able to connect what is happening with all of these things. If you straight away look at the configuration, try to do all the setting, everything will work without any problem, everything will work without any error, but you will find problems while understanding what is happening. Tomorrow, keep in your mind, wherever you join as a F I C O consultant, nowhere, majoritily you will configure this, am I correct? Majority of the situations, wherever you join, everywhere, these are already configured. Everywhere, these are already configured. Everywhere these are already configured, it is very rare you may be working in the implementation project or so on. Or if you are in a rollout project or so on, there are configurations which are already made. Point number one, when you are talking about bank reconciliation, is this bank reconciliation config company code specific or client specific? Is this bank reconciliation company code specific or client specific?
Company code specific. Company code.
Not company code specific, this is. Right? Chart of account means company code level or client level?
Client level.
Right.
Client level, we know that all the company codes are using same chart of account, so chart of account is nothing but client level? Right, to avoid, for every bank I create, I will do the BRS configuration, we are using a logic called main account, sub-account. When we understood, we will be using the main account, sub-account, what would, what did we discuss? We discussed for all the company codes across the world, for that particular client, everywhere you must use same logic, ending with a zero main account, if ending with one incoming, in all your company codes, in all your countries, you must follow the same logic. You cannot change the logic, agree?
Yes sir.
Right, for one company code, I can create, ending with one is incoming account, for another company code, ending with one is outgoing account, is that allowed or not allowed?
Not allowed.
That is not allowed. Right, in one country like this, in some other country, some other way, not allowed. Because you know, this bank reconciliation is configured at a client level. When we know it is configured at a client level, you need to understand, right from the base, everything is properly set up. As you move forward, you should find, yes, all these things, all these logics I am already aware of, then your work will become simplified. Otherwise, as you move forward, you will see that nothing is working as expected, reason, from the base, everything is incorrectly set up. And when you are trying to consolidate everything, nothing is matching, nothing is correlating. So these are differences, these misunderstandings, you should not get it. Try to understand the processes slowly and then make sure, okay, I am now able to understand what is happening. What if tomorrow you get a FICO consulting job, you are in a support project? In this support project, client is already using BRS or client wants you to set up BRS?
Client is already using.
Client is already using BRS. Majority of the situations, wherever you join, you will be in the support projects initially. At least for the first one month. For sure you will be in the support project, you will not do any configuration, you will be working for a client where SAP is already implemented or you may be rolling out SAP to some other location by taking another existing company code as a reference, in any ways. Assuming, take a scenario, you are joining a project where SAP is already implemented, do not be with a mindset, okay, now I am in the project, give me the BRS, I will configure BRS. To configure BRS, how long it will take? One week or one month? One day? In the project I am talking, one day is sufficient to to do the config?
Sir. Yes sir.
Right, but if you are working in a project where SAP is already implemented, BRS is already happening, your focus is on how to do the configuration or your focus is on how their BRS is currently implemented, how your client is currently doing the reconciliation, what we need to understand? We need to understand how their reconciliation is currently happening, how their system is currently set up. And this, can you ask your user how your BRS is performing? BRS is a universal thing, everybody knows how a BRS is performed, am I correct?
Sir.
I cannot ask how do you do BRS, right? Forget about I am from SAP or non-SAP. If I am representing, I know accounting, I must know what is BRS, yes or no?
Yes sir.
Now forget about I am from SAP or non-SAP, I should know BRS means checking my account balance with bank statement or bank balance. Now I should know there is something called bank statement. Now we should understand in companies, we should understand in companies, what kind of a bank statement they will be using. If you are downloading your bank statement, if I am downloading my bank statement, probably I will download in Excel format or I will download in PDF, am I correct?
Sir.
Either I will download in Excel or I will download in PDF, but in company, is it Excel format, is it a PDF format or is there any other format?
Other formats.
What is that called?
MT nine forty format.
Right, we will be using MT nine forty format or BAI format.
Yeah.
So you need to first understand MT nine forty format. Okay, what is MT nine forty format? What if somebody is telling we are using MT nine forty format? You cannot ask what is MT nine forty, right? You should understand what is MT nine forty, it is a format name provided by as per this Swift format, this is one of the format, MT nine forty. Okay, you need to know what is MT nine forty, how statement represents in MT nine forty, how we need to understand MT nine forty format. Slowly we need to make sure we are getting familiar to it. And then how system is reading the format? How you are doing the reconciliation, in any organization, whenever you do bank reconciliation, it is not majoritely hundred percent reconciled, am I correct?
Yes sir.
Whenever you perform bank reconciliation, not always you will have hundred percent reconciliation, there is a mismatch. So when you are talking about reconciliation, there are two types of items here, one is reconciled item and another one is unreconciled or non-reconciled item. So you need to understand what are we doing with this unreconciled or non-reconciliation items? We need to look at it later stage. Right, if I upload this statement, if not everything is posted, it is not okay, you need to see why the entries are not posted, on what basis the system is doing the reconciliation. Slowly we need to make sure we are understanding it. Based on that, when you do the configuration, when you try to look at the system, things will get registered in your mind logically. Tomorrow if you are in any project, you are talking to any user, these understandings will help you. Because in the user, with the client, with the project team and all, you cannot tell the configuration, right? Can you stand up and then tell the configuration, like children talking about rhymes, no right?
No.
You should explain what is the requirement, what could be the problem, why there is a mismatch. In the project, especially whenever you join, nobody will discuss the configuration, everybody will discuss the requirement, everybody will discuss the problem, everybody wants the solution. Configuration is not the solution, configuration is only the process to provide the solution. You need to understand the requirement, make sure, okay, this is how the current system is designed, this is how their current process is followed, to bring this into SAP, what should I do? In this process, you may be using the configuration, but configuration alone is not the solution. So from here onward, you need to slowly ensure you are understanding the process, you are getting connected to the business process, you need to simulate. Okay, if I am in the project, if I am the user, this is how I am going to do it. If I am the consultant, if I need to set up a BRS, what I need to do? Now it is easy for you, I may be opening the system, I may be doing the configuration, you will follow the recording, you will follow the material, you will follow the config step, material, you will do it. Is it the same case in the project?
No sir.
Nowhere this is the same case, wherever you go. You need to discuss with the user, you need to talk to the client, understand the requirement and map it with SAP, in which you need to know how SAP reconciliation works, you also need to know how client reconciliation is working. Accordingly you need to match. And see if it is all simple, straightforward or if there is any mismatch, if there is any gap, you need any further clarification, sit with the user again, try to understand, sit with the user, look at when they are performing the reconciliation. Ask them to explain how you are matching the interest, they will make you understand everything. Just by watching what they are doing, just by discussing, putting a cross question, you need to get your requirement. Remember, nobody will make you understand the requirement, nobody will make you understand the process in detail because in the project, it is not a training. In the project, it is your performance, it is not your training, am I clear? Keeping these points in your mind, you will have to ensure, provided you have the sufficient understanding, you will be able to manage, otherwise it might be difficult, I am not saying you cannot manage, you can still manage but you will have to struggle. Asking them, asking others, Googling, Youtubing, different things you need to do, just because you are not understanding. If you pay attention at that understanding level, everything will follow you automatically. Whatever the assignments that you are getting, will make you understand a different thing. And there you will understand practically, it might be sounding very simple when I explain, but when you sit in front of the system, doing whatever we are discussing, will take time or not? That is where you are going to understand so many points. You will think that it's very simple, I will do it, sit in front of the system, then you will know the reality. You will have so many questions, whether this, whether that, you will find lot of confusions in your mind. He asked me to do it, but he did not tell how, what should I take? So many questions running in your mind, you need to ensure, okay, let me assume this, I will try this. If this is not working, let me ask him tomorrow. You will have so many points striking your mind. In the similar way, when you are in any project, while talking to the user, while talking to the business, you will find requirement very simple, just one, two, three, go, I can do it. But you come today, sit in the system, when you try to think, you will forget everything, whatever you discussed with your client. Whatever the key points that they said, we will forget, reason, according to us, we are understanding BRS configuration or any other topic of configuration means, I know the config, I have the material, I have the document, I have everything. You don't worry, I will take care. Tomorrow you have to be taken care by somebody else. Because you are not in a position to understand the requirement, your config will not meet the requirement, this is the ground reality. Because clients, users will not be okay with whatever you deliver in standard, you need to make them understand, you need to make them feel connected, convinced with the system, for which understand their process, connect everything with their process only. In short, when you are talking, they should feel you are talking their business process, not SAP process, there is a huge difference between these two. If I am talking SAP process, nowhere I will represent their client business process, am I correct?
Sir.
But if I understand their business process, when I am talking to them, for example, your client is operating bank account in HDFC Bank, let's say they are using HDFC Bank in Bangalore Electronic City branch. Then when you are talking to them, take an example, same HDFC Bank Electronic City branch, they feel connected or not when you are talking? That is the main reason why we discuss with the client, why we have requirement gathering session, why we will, we will have all these workshops and all. That is where you are going to understand their process. When you are giving your presentations, when you are giving your demos, when you are talking to the client going forward, make sure you connect their business process in your explanation, in your presentations everywhere. You are keeping all this aside, you are simply by default like a robot, you are talking, all SAP standard process, nobody will get connected with you. Meaning, when you talk, you are technically hundred percent correct. But practically, with respect to the client, with respect to the project, something is missing. You are getting lot of cross questions, your client is not okay or different things are happening because they are not feeling confident that yes, this candidate can deliver without any issues. Because whatever you are talking is nowhere relevant to their process. But this reason, why understanding business process is more important in any SAP FICO project at least. Because when you are talking it, you need to also represent balance sheet. Most of the time we will talk about BRS, we will talk about configuration, we will talk about T-code, we will say BRS is completed, the end. But the whole objective of doing BRS is to show correct representation of what? Balance sheet.
Arushna?
Am I correct? The whole objective of performing BRS is to represent correct balance sheet position, yes or no?
Yes sir.
Yes sir.
If I say, in my bank account currently there is two point five crore. You will believe me? If I say I have two point five crores in my bank account at this moment? If I show statement, you will believe? Or if I tell, you will believe?
Yes sir.
Statement.
If I show this statement, you will believe, if I tell, right, if I tell I have only twenty rupees now with me. Let's say you are asking me five hundred rupees, I will tell, no, 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 I have only fifty rupees with me now, you will believe?
No sir.
I have to show the statement, right? Statement means checking the actual bank balance. Whether you check it from bank statement, whether you check it from phone pay, Google pay, XYZ pay, it is the same thing, am I correct? Wherever you are getting bank actual balance, that is the bank statement, am I correct?
Yes sir.
Now don't connect it with always going to bank, downloading the statement, updating the passbook, not, not like that. You can also check the bank balance from your Google pay, phone pay.
Yes sir.
Alright, that is also the statement, I need to prove that this is my balance. I am just proving, proving you, but this is my account balance, only fifty rupees, I cannot give you five hundred rupees. I cannot bluff, I cannot fake, right? I have to show the proof. Similarly, any company, any organization, when they prepare their financial statement, TB PNL balance sheet, in the balance sheet on the assets side, they have to represent bank balance, yes or no?
Sir.
If they show, let's say, two point five crores as bank balance, there should be a supporting document. What is the supporting document for it? Bank statement.
Sir.
Because I can manipulate this, right? I can simply pass one more entry, one manual entry I will pass, I will convert to two point five crore to twenty five crore, possible or not?
Yes sir.
Yes.
I will pass one more entry manually, I will debit my bank account, I will credit XYZ dummy account, I will show my bank balance as twenty five crore, possible? Where is the proof? When you submit your financial statement on a monthly basis, to your management or to your auditors, to stakeholder, whosoever, your bank balance must be supported by bank statement. Without bank statement, nobody will trust, nobody will believe your bank balance, am I correct? Because bank statement, you cannot edit, I cannot edit. Because bank statement is always monthly statement, financials are also monthly financials, am I correct?
Yes sir.
TB PNL balance sheet, I need to do it on a monthly basis. Bank statement also, I will get it on a monthly basis. So if I am talking about, if I am talking about financial statement related to November, it is representing one November to what?
Thirty first November.
Thirty November.
Thirtyth November. Thirtyth November. If I am talking about bank statement for November, same thing?
Same thing.
November TB PNL balance sheet. Cut off date. Is it thirtieth November or is it some other date? What will be the cut off date for November TB PNL balance sheet?
No, December.
Three Friday.
Plus two days, sir, plus three.
You will be definitely December, maybe three, maybe five, maybe seven, yes or no?
Yes sir.
So when I am preparing my financials, I already crossed November, am I correct?
Yes sir.
I am completely of no help that I can do the manipulation in statement. Can I ask bank, let's say on first I found some mismatch, can I go to bank, ask bank to adjust it on thirtieth date, will bank do it?
No sir.
If I ask bank to do it, any adjustment with yesterday date, will bank accept it?
No sir. No, sir.
No, right, if I ask bank to do it tomorrow, will bank accept it with tomorrow's date, future it will accept, but past it will not accept, right?
Yes, sir.
With future date, I can ask, I can tell bank, okay, I have currently twenty five thousand, please pay ten thousand to this account on Wednesday, bank will accept. You have the P D Cs, you have the future date, value date, I will initiate the transaction today, but I will put value date, effective date, Wednesday, possible or not?
Yes, sir.
Transaction is accepted, but the transaction will take effect on the specified date, but this is only applicable for future dated, not for past dated. So in the past, I can do nothing, I have to ensure my balance sheet, asset, bank balance is aligned with my bank statement. Can I do any manipulation in my bank balance?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Completely ruled out. But in between, I can do anything, for example, today you want to check my bank account balance, no problem, I can manipulate it, I will post one manual entry today. That I received some five lakhs from so and so customer, tomorrow I will reverse it. I say that no, by mistakenly this entry is posted. Possible or not? I will post one entry today, I will give you the report, tomorrow I will re- reverse it. Do you identify that this is what I am doing it, some manipulation, no right? That is why your financial statements are not taken on any key date, strictly they are taken on a month end date. Because when you perform the month end, when you are finalizing T B P N L balance sheet, it is assumed that you have the confirmation from the CFO on it. Yes or no?
Yes, sir.
Somebody verified it with all the supporting validation and all, only then they will be revealed, only then they will be submitted to any other external parties. Now, when you are talking about bank reconciliation, if you are not representing. Balance sheet, if you are not representing bank balance, all these keywords, if you are not using, whatever you tell, again, we will go for a toss. Again fifty fifty, depending on the luck. Somebody is asking why, why we need to do B R S? May not be S I P relevant question, maybe basic accounting fundamental question. Everybody is aware, B R S is mandatory in every Fico interview, yes or no?
Yes, sir.
For every Fico interview, you will be questioned about B R S, okay, you, you are well prepared about B R S, all the config you are able to explain me. Without any issue, without any defect, crystal clear, you are hundred percent correct. But if somebody is putting a basic fundamental question, why we need to do B R S? Can I say no, this is mandatory in S I P Fico, we need to do it? No, right? Can you say I do not know why we need to do B R S, but I know how to do B R S? Meaningful or not meaningful?
Not meaningful.
Right, I cannot say how we will do B R S without saying, I do not know why we are doing B R S. Because we are telling, I am four years experienced in S I P Fico, I implemented B R S in my X Y Z project, does not mean. That you do not know what, what is B R S, right, it should clearly represent, you are clear with the process, you know. What is the business case, what is the business requirement, what is the business expectation, from S I P, what is the standard functionality, how you deliver it, you should have a clarity. Slowly, you should make sure, okay, let me connect the dots, this is what it is happening, this is how I need to perform. Tomorrow, assume you are working in a project where S I P is already implemented, B R S are already using it, you need to work on the system. To support on their B R S related problem. No other go, you need to understand B R S on your own by looking at the S I P, by logging into S I P, am I correct?
Sir.
When we do it, whether we are aware, how do I understand B R S from the existing S I P system? If there is nothing, I am able to create it, it is okay, anybody can do it. But if there is a system where B R S is already implemented, am I in a position to, am I confident enough to open the system? Understand the process and then do it or not? That's where your Fico consulting skill will come out. If nothing is there, anybody can do anything, if there is something, whether you are able to identify what is there, how it is working and all, that is where your understanding will come out. You need not understand everything, nobody will understand everything, because it is client specific process. But key components, key configuration, key process is what you will easily identify from there. On which you need to ensure you are comfortable, you are confident with, put your efforts at this area, at this extent. Am I clear? When you are putting your efforts at this level, you will find, okay, now I am able to relate what is this. Tomorrow, when somebody is asking, even though you have no configuration practice, still you will. Feel comfortable, confident to talk to anyone. You do not need to do any configuration if you know all the key points. But however much you practice, if you do not know this key point, you will have to be speechless in front of different people at different situations. All right, so tomorrow what we will do, from tomorrow onwards, we will try to understand one simple bank statement, whatever the payment I did, for the same payment, I will do the B R S. Which payment I did currently with bank, incoming or outgoing?
Outgoing vendor payment.
Outgoing vendor payment I did, what I am going to do tomorrow, I will make you understand what is, we will first understand, as I said, manual bank statement. And then we will do E B S, so I will process manual bank statement tomorrow for outgoing payment. On the same logic, I will explain the requirement for incoming payment, you do incoming payment, you do incoming bank reconciliation on your own. Without any difficulties, you will be able to do it, then you will practically understand what problems are coming when you are configuring it. Because I am not going to show incoming bank reconciliation, I will only give the requirement. Treat me as your user, treat me as your client, and then get my requirement, I will give the bank. You are not going to configure in the same bank where you did outgoing payment, outgoing B R S is in a different bank account, incoming B R S will be in a different bank account. Then you will understand, how do I look at a bank, how do I create a bank, different connecting points you will understand, which will revise the topics, whatever you have done previously, in a connecting manner. So revise your customers one time, revise your house bank creation one time, look at incoming, outgoing G L account logic one more time. Look at customer invoice one time, look at customer payment one more time, so that this is going to be your assignment for tomorrow. Tomorrow, this assignment is what I am going to give after I perform vendor bank reconciliation, clear?
Yes, sir.
Then you can practically relate what is happening, tomorrow when somebody is asking, it will be more easier for you to explain. This is how I got the requirement, this is how I fulfilled the requirement, wherever you are getting stuck, in the similar way, you will get stuck in the project, there is nothing new in the project. Whatever you are doing the assignment here, similar things you will come in your, you will come across in your project, similar errors, a similar understanding problem you will have in the project. Then you will understand, okay, I need this, I need this, this is missing, this is missing, you will find so many question marks, you will find so many missing points. Let's fill, let's clarify everything, so that there is no point, you are confused in future. Fine then, let me stop this here.